The May 1st, 2024 Planning Commission Meeting to Order. The main purposes of tonight's meeting are election of Commission Chair and Vice Chair, and a study session on frontage regulations. Before we move on to the agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our hybrid meeting format. The City of Bothell is providing the option to attend this meeting either in person or remotely via Zoom. For those participating via Zoom, the chat and question functions are not available to ensure compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. We have a public comment agenda item at the beginning of the meeting. This time is for items for issues not scheduled for hearing on tonight's agenda. If you have comments on the frontage improvement study session item, this would be the time for them during public comment. Please limit these comments to three minutes. Please note that the City of Bothell does not tolerate verbal harassment, and please remember this during your comments. Public comment will be allowed both in person and via Zoom. Those who wish to comment via Zoom are asked to submit an online form by 3:00 PM today. People wishing to submit written comments were also asked to submit those comments by 3:00 PM. Email was encouraged as well, and will be acknowledged. I don't believe we received either notices of Zoom or written comment. Those in attendance may also make comments and have been asked to indicate their desire on the sign-in sheets right at the front of the room. The Madge in Bothell notice, City website, and tonight's agenda all provide information to the public for providing comments. Video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone and listen live to the meeting. For our phone-in callers, during staff presentation, staff will make every effort to specify which materials they are referencing so that everyone can follow along. At this point, we'll take a moment to acknowledge the attendance of commissioners. I'd like to start with our two new commissioners. If you'd like to introduce yourselves and just say a word or two, no, not too much.
Hello, Scarlett Lever. I moved to the City of Bothell in 2021, 2022, fall of 2022, and I'm just so pleased to be here.
Welcome. Glad to have you.
Hi, I'm Katie Sills. I have been a resident of Bothell for five years, but not new to the region. I was born and raised not too far from Bothell, so excited to serve.
Welcome aboard. Commissioner Westerbeck?
Here.
Commissioner Robson?
Here.
Commissioner Gustafson is absent and excused, and we haven't heard from Commissioner Jones, so we'll see. There's a bit of traffic out there, I understand. So in addition, we also have staff attending. We have Jason Greenspan, Community Development Director, Steve Morikawa, City Engineer, and Boyd Benson, Utilities and Development Services Manager. Lastly, before we begin, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For all attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. Mute your microphone when not speaking. If you are also streaming the live video feed, please turn the sound off as there is a delay. For commissioners, at specific breaks in the presentation, I'll be calling on members who wish to speak or ask a question. If you want to speak, please indicate that by raising your hand, and I will call on you as I see you. This will help avoid the problem of having two people speaking at the same time. Identify yourself before you ask a question, make a motion, second a motion, or participate in debate. And please mute your microphone when not speaking. So the first item on our agenda is public comment. The City of Bothell has accepted comment in writing as well as accepted sign-up sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Those speaking will have three minutes. Written comments submitted to staff and related to 3:00 PM today would have been forwarded, although we haven't seen them. And this time is for whatever you'd like to speak to within the three-minute limit. So am I correct in assuming there's no one in Zoom and no written comments? All right. In the audience, would you like to speak? No? Seeing that, there are no comments, we will move on to the approval of the February 7th Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Commissioner Robson?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any comments on the minutes? Pretty straightforward to me as well. All right, all in favor? They're approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, minutes of the February 7th meeting are approved. So for new business, per our bylaws, first regular meeting in May is on even number years. It's time to elect Chair and Vice Chair. So we'll start with Chair. Are there nominations for Chair? Commissioner Robson?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Kiernan to continue in his role as Chair.
One more time around, okay? Is there a second?
Happily second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any other nominations for Chair? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, well, thank you all for your continued confidence. One more round. All right, now Vice Chair. Is there a nomination for Vice Chair?
I would like to nominate Commissioner Robson again, if she's interested to continue.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Lever, second. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion and indicated willingness? All right, all in favor of Commissioner Robson being Vice Chair?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we have completed the election of Chair and Vice Chair, and we'll move on. So thank you all. So we have a study session now on frontage regulation, and I'd like to invite staff up to talk with us about that.
Thank you. Anyway, thank you for taking the time to have this discussion with us today. I'm going to bring up a PowerPoint. It's going to look pretty information-dense. I'm just letting you know ahead of time. This is a pretty information-dense subject, and so we'll try to take it as, we'll try to proceed with whatever way you want to go. So in discussions like this, sometimes it's good, hey, I've got a question, or maybe Steve or Jason will chime in. But really is to try to get your understanding of the issue and understand what staff is proposing, some possible policy items that could...
Chair, I just wanted to interrupt real quick. I just received an email from Commissioner Jones that she's in the Zoom room but not admitted yet. So I don't know, Maribeth, is the way to do that? We'll try our best to do that now.
So as you're getting ready here, I noted there are, I think, 10 different items that we'll be going through, and let's pause after each one and see if people have feedback to try and get you whatever direction we may have on them, rather than run through all of them and kind of forget where we're at.
Most definitely. Yes, please.
Thanks.
Okay. So the subject tonight is single lot residential frontage improvements. And I'm just going to take this step by step. So why we're here tonight is to present information about frontage improvement regulations as they currently exist, and some proposed policy changes for single lot residential improvements. And we'll go through each of these step by step as discussed, and we'll make sure there's time for comment. So just a bit of history. We last updated our frontage improvement requirements back in 2021. They are very difficult to understand. They, the, when you look at frontage improvements, the thresholds and triggers were kind of confusing, so we simplified them quite a bit. And this was with city legal, city staff, and city council. But at that time, we had not really seen the ADU or middle housing issue arise. So with the eight updates in 2023, we started looking at our code proactively, and that was to make sure that we could comply with forthcoming regulations. However, we didn't make the changes or bring them forth to council. We typically bundle these things up at the end of the year. And we had some public comment to council, and council asked some questions, and so we brought this back to council to see if they'd like to discuss this. And that was an agenda setting. So we basically came to council and said, we heard what you've said, and would you like us to schedule this on an agenda to bring back for consideration? And they said yes. And I'll walk you through some of the considerations there. And then part of the next steps is, since this is Municipal Code Title 17, there's process in there that Planning Commission has consulted, and so we'd like to bring forward some of what the draft policy ideas from staff. And when I say staff, that is management, that is Public Works, Community Development. We've included all the divisions to make sure that we have something that makes good sense and still complies with code. So an overview, what's the issue? It's frontage utility requirements for residential single lot development. We'll go through how that differs from commercial or subdivision or city projects while we're here. We had questions about this. We'd always, as I said, we'd always plan to update the code, but it's time to do it now, and you're the recommending body. What's the desired output are we looking at? We're really looking for feedback, questions, comments. Is there consensus? At some point, Director Greenspan will talk about the process of how that formally goes to council. And with next steps, if everyone looks at these things, and yeah, that kind of makes sense, we're in pretty good shape. If there are some, hey, you know, have you thought about this, this, you should address this, we'll come back for additional Planning Commission consideration. Once we get to the point where this is solid enough, and it may be solid enough tonight, we don't know, we'll proceed to council. But there's always time for comment, there is always time for Planning Commission to say, yeah, this makes sense, but... And the reason I state it this way is these processes usually take quite a bit of time. We come back a couple times and the rest. But this is a pretty up-and-coming issue, and we've discussed a very accelerated timeline with city council. So the actual revisions to the code are really tiny, but it's more getting the concepts across to make sure that everyone understands and thinks this is a good way to go. So, single lot residential development, accessory dwelling units and middle housing. A lot of you have seen this before, but there is legislation in 2023 that provided additional flexibility for ADUs, and there's both attached ADUs connected to the building and detached ADUs, separate structures. There are increased allowances through the legislation, and that has been applied to Municipal Code here. So currently, if you have one dwelling unit, you can have up to one attached ADU to the dwelling unit and one separate. If you have a middle housing lot, and we'll see that on the right, you can have one ADU. And the Municipal Code for this City of Bothell also considered what happens if you have an existing home and you convert that to an ADU and build another home. And so there's some considerations in there. What is middle housing? It is really intended as residential-scale buildings with multiple dwelling units. So when you see a row of townhomes, some may think that's middle housing, and it can be, but it's also townhomes. But when you see a home that's split and it turned into duplex, or there's families living on different floors, or it's cottage or courtyard, that's also the approach for middle housing. And both House Bill 1110 and Municipal Code in 2023, 2024 updated these things. And so currently, to comply with state regulations or legislation, anywhere in the city on a residential lot, you can do a duplex. That's just flat-out allowed. Fourplexes are allowed in residential areas if you're within a half or quarter mile of a walk, and I put bus, rapid transit, because that's the only ones that really apply to the City of Bothell. You can do four without any restrictions. Elsewhere in the city, you can do four, and one must be affordable. And there's also provisions for cottages and courtyards. What's interesting about House Bill 1110, which not a lot of folks pay attention to, there's provisions in there that you can actually split lots once you do this. And so the city takes this very seriously, because the typical way we see increase in lots is subdivision. It's a very structured process, and we're used to seeing one lot turn into 20 lots. It's very simple. This is someone can come in and they could do a duplex, and they, if they did the right firewalls and the plumbing, they could split it down the center and sell both lots. And that's what's unique about this, and I'm not sure it's up front in people's minds. But part of this is really the types of ownership. If you have, if you build a middle housing unit, and I'll have exhibits, I'm just kind of prepping your brains, that are four separate units separated by firewalls, and that's the way you choose to build it, it's really easy to subdivide it. Just, it's easy. You can, you can split the lots, you can have what's called fee simple ownership, you own the underlying, and each unit is a foundation to rooftop ownership, no problem. If you come and develop middle housing where one family lives on one floor, one family lives on the other floor, you can't really subdivide that. You can't put lot lines in. So the ownership there is different. It's apartments or condos or something else. Now, on one hand, if you own the property and the structure, you should make sure that you have your own power, water, gas, sewer, storm. It's just kind of, it just has to happen. It's equitable, it makes sure you get the services you pay for. Alternatively, if somehow magically someone has the water meter on their half and you subdivide a home, how does that work? The only way it works then is condominiumization. So at the end of this, we'll talk about utilities. It's a very small part of this, but I think that distinction is really important. Frontage improvements. This is a question, and anytime we update our capital facility plans, we talk about these. City improvements are not intended to take the place of developer improvement. City improvements are to provide system-wide accommodations for growth. So when you think about city improvements for transportation, that's like 185th or Bothell Way. If you think about utilities, that's to put a big water main in or update sewer or lift stations. These things are planned as part of our seven-year capital facilities plan, and the city pays for that. When we say the city pays for that for transportation, that's our transportation impact fee, that's our real estate excise tax. There are certain pods of money that are intended to address system-wide growth. So when we talk about city improvements, they're really not intended to install sidewalk on each lot, it's to take care of big growth. When you start looking at what we've typically seen in the past, which is larger developments, they take care of the frontage. If you have a development on unimproved right-of-way, let's say it's one lot that splits into 20, they're adding trips, they're adding burden to the utility system, they're doing all these things where the lot wasn't really intended for that type of use. So the city requires to bring those things up to date. So you'll typically see big ones like, you know, what you see downtown. They'll come in, they'll pay their impact fees, they'll do their frontage, because they really are intensifying the land use. And the key here is the bottom bullet, growth pays for growth. The City of Bothell is pretty progressive about this. It's, it's, at least my read on council is it's not intended for ratepayers to pay for some future growth, or it's not intended for, you know, if someone doesn't do their part when they, to mitigate their impacts, it's not really a city project, and this is my personal opinion. So the way we'd like to explain this is regulations and standards change, and this is the part that growth pays for growth. So this is a really cool example. This is a, this is Ross Road right here on 185th, right? You can see it kind of shooting off up to the northeast. In 1936, it was orchards and trees and all this stuff. In 1955, somewhat, it was subdivided. So when it was subdivided, it was subdivided intended for single dwelling units, and someone came in and spent considerable effort and expense, and it wasn't the city, to install roads, sewer, storm, water. It may be ditches, there may be no sidewalks, but it was, it was designed in accordance to the standards at the time. So the way we see this is, okay, you put a single-family lot on there, no problem. You demolish a single-family home, when you replace it, you know, it was already designed for that. It may not meet current standards, but it makes sense. Now, once you intensify the use, that's when, oh, this wasn't originally designed for this type of use. This, they're adding impact, they should probably mitigate their impact. So the one I like to use as an example, which is pretty cool, right here on 185th, is the Ross Road Apartments. You've seen that. It looks, it's allowed, it looks a lot of character, but that was, what, four homes with no sidewalk, no storm. It was old water main, it was undersized and the wrong type of material, there was sewer, the road wasn't sufficient. So when they developed, they were required to bring all the frontage and utilities up to current standards. Well, should that be the city's job? No, because before it was redeveloped, things were there that were designed to accommodate one home per lot. Now, someone intensifies the use, that's more pedestrian trips, that's more load on the sewer and storm and water. So those things are brought up to date. So that's, that's the story. Now, the kicker is, it's really simple to go from a single lot and see this big apartment building, but what about this new middle housing and ADUs? And that's the part we'd like to talk about. So this is our current frontage policy, and it's a lot of words, but everything to the right, subdivisions, multifamily, commercial, these are big developments. It's really easy to demonstrate, and typically it's not even required, it's, to demonstrate it, because it's there in the code and the standards, that, yeah, you will improve the frontage, just like Ross Road Apartments. You will update the storm and sewer water and all these good things. And that way, the impacts from this development, it isn't passed on to ratepayers, taxpayers, and the community, right? What we have there now, on the other side, the left side, is it's just blanket. If you are a residential lot and you redevelop that increases the value more than 50%, you do frontage and utility improvements. And that wasn't triggered very often until we had middle housing. If it was less than 50%, well, you should still mitigate your impacts, you should still provide a safe walking area and services and stuff, but that was capped at a maximum of 25% of the value of the improvements. And that's how it looks. We're, and I think the next slide shows, oh, sorry, I should have... What we're saying is, let's look at the stuff on the left side. So what we did is we looked at other cities, Bellevue, Kirkland, Redmond, Woodenville, they're pretty progressive with codes, and we started looking at what do they require? And Bothell's up there as well. So everything on the right, if it's subdivision, multifamily, commercial, it's just, it's typically full frontage and utilities up to standards. Mitigate your impacts. If it's an ADU, you'll see it's kind of all over the place. Woodenville is actually in compliance with current requirements, same with Redmond. Kirkland has this threshold that they set a while ago, and that's their, their attempt at proportionality, and Bellevue just outright says you don't have to do it. And there's Bothell's. So that's kind of it. There's some interesting stuff. I mean, Woodenville, if you increase the percenter by 50%, and Redmond, if you increase the gross floor area value by 100%, are kind of nice, because some of this type of development, I'm not saying ADUs, but the ones in between, they can burden the system. And if you have one home and you turn it into four homes, maybe should mitigate your impacts, and that's what we'll be talking about in a minute. So once again, on the right, stay the same. The left, it's really simple. RCW and the ADU legislation says we can't require frontage utility improvements. What we can do is if someone has substandard services, you know, it's poor water line connection, or they have a leaky sewer discharge line, we can still require that. And we can also still require right-of-way dedication to make sure that if someone builds something, or at least consideration of that, that they're not building it in an area that the city will come back in the future and say, hey, we need that to put in a bike lane. And the middle part is this discussion. And I have, I'm just going to take a pause. I have like, some really good slides coming up, but any questions so far about this?
Commissioner Robson?
Thank you. I have a question here. When you say increase the value by more than 50%, what, what are you using to determine the value?
That's a very good question, and that's part of the confusion. So once again, we're going away from that. We're looking at gross square footage and number of dwelling units, but right now, it's vague enough in the code...
It's vague enough, okay.
Where what we look at is the value of the improvements, the structures, not the property, but the structures.
Okay.
And we have a little bit of comment on that coming up.
Right, and if I can follow that up with something? How, when, when it's saying that you can't require an ADU to change utilities and things like that unless there's like a poor water connection, how is that evaluated before the structure is built?
Yeah, so that's, these are really good. So in the past, we just say, this is our code, you have to do this. And it could even include addressing poor water main or sewer, that's what the old standard said and the old code that's been superseded.
And just poor.
Right now, for any new connections to water, we want to make sure it's, it's polypropylene and not, we don't have lead in the City of Bothell. It's not galvanized that's messed up. So typically, we will have them evaluate that. So for sewer, it's really simple. There's a lot of sewer lines in the City of Bothell from homes that are clay pipe with no gaskets. Now, that allows water in, that allows roots in, and the residents required to maintain that service line from the home to the main. So we're doing our due diligence, one, to protect the resident or the dwelling unit, dweller, and then, two, it reduces inflow into the system and all these things that are really important. So it is kind of health environment, and that's real simple.
Okay, okay.
How many, like, what's the number of frontage improvements there are? And how does it compare to the other municipalities? Like, is it 20? Is it five? How many are we talking?
So this is good, because I thought I had a slide in here that actually described what we mean by frontage improvements, and I don't think it made it in here, so I need to describe that. So when we speak of frontage improvements, if you consider an asphalt road with a ditch, right? Which we have all over downtown. When we say frontage improvements, should that redevelop to a certain standard, and we're going to talk about those thresholds, and you're generating more trips, well, should these people have access via sidewalk? Should the road be wide enough? Should it be built correctly? So when I say frontage improvements, I'm saying curb, gutter, sidewalk, landscape strip. And most jurisdictions are the same way. So another way to budge our question is, you see development all over the city, and if it's a big one, you'll see that the roads look like the roads should look like, there's walk paths for, for the community and the rest, and that's what we're talking about. Does that kind of answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, I'm trying to think, like, if there was someone who wanted to take a single lot and turn it into four units, are you requiring a sidewalk then be put in that just ends, you know, at that property line? And like, what that looks like, or does that make sense? Like, are there certain things that are dependent on where it is, or, you know, are there categories, like aesthetic things versus, you know, utility and impact on utilities, like all those sorts of categories?
This is good. So we'll get to the thresholds that we're proposing in a minute. Once again, this is all the old stuff, and you'll see some presentation of that. But the approach the city takes, which is pretty well-founded, is the city will never install, okay, I shouldn't say that, there's very low potential for the city to install sidewalks on local access roads. There's just not the funds. The city focuses on arterials and system-wide improvements. So if, this is what we're trying to convey, if someone comes and if that lot was designed for one home, and it had gutters or ditches and a road with no sidewalk, maybe it's appropriate to put one or two homes on there. But if you're doing four or more or something like that, should they mitigate their impacts? And what you bring up is we could have sections of sidewalk that just end. The alternative, though, is we never have sidewalks. So when you look at 185th, you see these projects coming in and the improvements they're making, and they're bigger projects, but they're actually linking up the sidewalk system, which is good. So what, once again, City of Bothell Council is, I'm not speaking for them, but it is, you know, make sure that growth mitigates their impacts. And it, like I said, it works really good for big commercial and big subdivisions. This one is a bit more difficult, so let me walk you through that. But it really is, the ultimate vision is everyone should have a safe walk route, and everyone should have these things, but we understand that the city won't be doing that everywhere. And it'll make more sense in a second. Hopefully, I'm answering. So let's take some examples, and these always help. So right now, what we're saying is, and we've already been given the direction, that since the regulations say you can't require frontage, we can't. So let's say you have an existing dwelling unit and you add a new ADU. Right now, it's, you're exempt from installation of frontage, and we'd say the same with main utility improvements. We'd still ask you to make sure to check your service lines and the rest. This includes conversion of existing dwelling unit to an ADU, and this is the one that actually came to council, where someone has a 970-square-foot home and they want to build a 2,400-square-foot home. So are they building an ADU? No, they're building a new home. But as a net result, a home with an ADU, and the answer is yes. So what staff, you know, we're talking community development, managing the rest, is like, this, there is no difference whether it's a home that's turned into an ADU and you build a bigger home, or it's a big home that adds an ADU, right? Same net result. So what you'll see as we go further on, that for ADUs, frontage is not required. If you convert an existing home into an ADU and build a new dwelling unit, it's the same net result, so why would frontage be required? So you'll see that further on as a policy recommendation. Division or replacement of a dwelling unit, when, and we're saying, if you take an existing dwelling unit and you split it in two, it's the same footprint, it's the same floor area, you could have a family of six there or two families of two, I put that picture down there because that's kind of how I see this going. It doesn't have a lot of increased impact. And then when you start thinking about impact, it's, I'm not, we want to be proportional. So it's really easy to say going from one home to 20, it's less easy to say, is it one home to two or one home to four? Right now, what staff is proposing is if you have one home and you go to two, you can't go to 1.5 homes, you go to two, maybe you're exempt from frontage. Or if you have one home and you increase it by less than 100%, less than equal, so you have a 3,000-square-foot home and you make it to 6,000 square feet, or you have a 3,000 square-foot home and you add a 3,000-square-foot second dwelling unit. You know, there has to be some threshold of where we think, okay, if you go beyond that, you should be doing frontage improvements. Or you have a 3,000-square-foot home and you add a 3,000-square-foot second dwelling unit. You know, there has to be some threshold of where we think, okay, if you go beyond that, you should be doing frontage improvements. And I'm gonna show you some examples to show that really clearly. To me, and this is just me, and like, once again, we compared to other cities, we're actually kind of ahead. It's, this is kind of a gray area in a lot of code, but we think this is a good way to go. So right now, what we're showing is, okay, no frontage improvements, no curb gutter sidewalk, the rest, because you're not increasing the impact significantly. So then we go to something else. Now, this is what we're seeing on 185th. You have an existing lot with one home, you demolish the home and you build four townhomes. They all have their own garage, they're all relatively large, they're all foundation-to-rooftop ownership. That can be subdivided very simply. And this could occur, that type of development could occur on any lot in the city, and if it's within a quarter-mile of a walk route of a BRT station, it could just all be fee simple. Now, when I see that, and once again, this is, I'm not saying it's subjective, but it is, it is a sliding scale. To me, that looks like that's going to create a lot more impacts. You'll have four families, definitely. It'll be foundation-to-rooftop ownership. You'll have additional vehicles, you'll be generating more trips and all this. So in this case, what we were saying is, okay, you're increasing by more than one dwelling unit, you're increasing the, which we'd say, okay, you're going to do some frontage improvements, you're increasing the gross floor area by way more than 100%. So yeah, you should mitigate your impacts. And that's kind of, this is kind of the crux of the matter. So once again, one dwelling unit, it may or may not have any frontage. You go to something like three or four, more than two, we're saying you should probably do frontage. Now, the goal of this is to also provide affordability and not be burdensome to create new homes. So frontage improvements can be expensive. This could be a longer frontage. So what can we do? Well, we can retain that same 25% cap of value to improvements. So on a project like this, and we have someone here that probably knows the value of something like this, but we're talking multimillion-dollar project, for them to install 100 feet of frontage, it's an impact, but it's not huge. Now, if they installed this where they had 1,000 feet of frontage, that really wouldn't be proportional. So maybe that's when this 25% cap would come in. And in those situations, it's, okay, well, how do you spend that 25%? It might not be on the landscape and all this stuff, but at least we're gonna get a path so that people can get to and from their dwellings like they should. Let's see if there's another. Okay. So in summary, what we're kind of showing is, okay, we understand everything on the right, it's full improvements. Everything on the left, ADUs or dividing a dwelling unit and you're less than 100%, you're probably okay. If you add a dwelling unit or gross floor area, and I put GSF, which makes me kind of sad, I have no idea how spell-checked in to catch that. What we're proposing for planning commission discussion and in council, if your improvements are less than equal 100% of in gross floor area increase, you're not doubling, you're not more than doubling the size of the structure, and you're not adding more than one dwelling unit, then no frontage, you haven't reached the threshold. And once again, this isn't ADUs. This is, this is what we showed before with like townhomes. If you increase gross floor area or increase the value by more than gross floor area or the dwelling units by more than one, then you will install proportional frontage, and that's limited to 25% of the development value. And the way we see this is for small projects where you kind of think of with middle housing, right? You're taking a home and you're dividing, or you're doing something like that. This is, this is less of a barrier to affordability than our current 50% value threshold. It just, they're, they won't trigger the threshold. And for larger projects, like you see that four, three, yeah, they'll mitigate their impacts, but that, the cost that they will be, you know, the cost threshold there is limited to that 25%. So it's a cost, but it hopefully wouldn't provide that much of a barrier. And then the next one, we talk about utility services, and I have one more slide for that, and I think we're done, but do you want to go to that or questions and comments about this?
We'll pause. Commissioners, any questions, comments? I guess we'll go to utilities.
Okay. And then we have time for just general discussion. Oh, go ahead.
Sharon, did you have your hand up? Yeah, okay. You're muted.
I did have my hand up. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, yes, we can now.
So I, everything here seems really reasonable, and I'm sure that you did some analysis on this, but I'm wondering if you could help us understand or help me understand what's the typical cost for frontage? And I know that, I know lot sizes differ, it's hard to say what a typical cost is, but I'm assuming that 25% versus the 50% is based on sort of what the typical cost would be relative to the value of the development? And so I was just wondering if you could give us a sense for how much frontage costs?
I can do that, but once again, we work on city projects, so we pay city prices, which are typically higher because of a lot of requirements. So instead of giving you an exact dollar, and I'll take a shot at it, and someone in here will say, yeah, that's closer or it's not close. What I will say, if you're doing a million-dollar development on a lot that fronts 50 feet, your improvements won't be $250,000. It'll be much less than that. So if you're on a frontage that's very long, it could be much more. And that's why I think that 25% cap is fair. So I'm just gonna take a shot, and please don't quote me on this, and I might have some input from Steve Morikawa, but the city may, I'm just gonna say, the city may budget $1,000 a foot for the city to do the work for full frontage. So 50 feet, that's $50,000. Well, if that's a million-dollar project, $50,000 is a lot of money, but it's not a huge barrier to affordability, and you get the improvements you need. With that said, like, the one that had four units, I mean, once again, I'm just gonna open this discussion to comment from anyone that knows actual numbers, we say pay these things, that value of that townhome project is probably in excess of two, maybe more million dollars. So if that's 80 feet of frontage, the city may pay $80,000. And once again, that's a ballpark number, and it could be higher, it could be lower, there's streetlights, there's all these other things that could be considered. But Steve, any comments on that or? Higher, definitely higher for city. Anyone in the audience or the planning question here that might want to comment on that?
Yeah, I know, yeah. I wish I had my spreadsheet with me. I've got construction costs for our four-unit coming up. But I, five years ago, last time I did this, the streetlight was 10 grand for labor and materials, almost on the nose, and I'm sure it's gone up quite a bit. Sidewalks for, we did 50 feet or something like that, it was like 25 grand, I think. And then the metal grates are surprisingly expensive because they're very heavy. You guys buy those sometimes, I know. They were, I don't know, a couple thousand percent, I think, per tree. And then trees are, I don't know, 1,000 or two each. That's just some of the stuff we had to put in. So yeah, we're probably at, yeah, $50,000, something like that, and all told for 50 feet.
Yeah, so we're close.
Yeah, exactly, on the private market, right?
Yeah, the private.
Like Steve said, probably higher.
We do pay. We do pay more.
I know, because I went through the Lake Comer fees as well.
Yeah, and so, yeah, so it's on the order of that. Does that help answer the question?
Oh, definitely does. And the reason for asking the question is just so I have some sense of how many times a project might exceed the 25% and then be exempt, because we are concerned about continuity of sidewalks and the overall aesthetics and lighting and safety and those types of things. So I just want to understand how often we might, you know, someone might be exempt from doing this even though they're improving the property and they're adding more homes, and there is going to be more impact.
No, for sure. And we currently use that 25%. And it doesn't really mean they're exempt, it just means that the city shouldn't be burdening that. It's not proportional. The full improvement isn't proportional. So let's say it was an extra home, but it was 1,000 feet instead of 50 feet, right? Now we're looking at 100,000, maybe that's more than 25%. What it means is, the city would work with the applicant to say, okay, we understand because of this cap, we can't make you do full curb gutter sidewalk landscape strip, but we can get you to put in an asphalt path. And so that schoolchildren can get to their safe walks and all that stuff. So that's how we look at this. So it's only been triggered, that 25% which we currently have has only been triggered a few times in the last, you know, since 2021, and it's been like, let's discuss this. How can you mitigate your impacts without breaking the bank?
Commissioner Lever.
I have a question about impact. So can you, I think you asked the question before, it's like, how many frontage requests do you get a year? And then who's gonna be impacted positively or negatively from the change? And then from approval to implementation, what does that process look like? And again, like, who's really gonna be gaining and losing from the changes? If you can talk about--
Yeah, no, that's a good one. And this is, it won't be super precise, but we have currently now, we may have, thinking of each development review engineer, each development, we have four development review engineers, and they may have on the order of 20 to 30 active projects. But it takes time, right? So for new applications, I don't have a number there for you, but we just did a summary of current projects in process, and it's, because we look at units coming in, and I'd say it's on the order of 50 to 80 in the next two years that are coming through. But that could be anywhere from a large development like Husky Village or the Seattle Times project down to two or three. So there are quite a few coming through for the permitting itself. Now, each of those are subject to improvements if they hit those thresholds. So then we'd say, okay, that's what you'd see. So hopefully, when you, I mean, you live here, when you drive around town, hopefully when you see a development go up and you see dirt being turned, typically you'll see sidewalks and the rest go in. Does that help? I mean, I'm not really answering your question exactly. I can't say exactly how many permits, but at any time, and we may have, actually, I do know this number because we looked at this, we may have 1,500 dwelling units in process over the next three years that we know are coming through. So there's quite a bit of load. Does that help? Okay, utilities. And I'm the utilities and development services manager, so this is important to me. So as part of my duties besides development review, working under Steve as city engineer, Steve's city engineer, is making sure that we understand how the utilities work, how we fund, finance them, and look at growth. So when this first started occurring in 2023, our first question is, wait a second, how's this gonna work with people getting service with utilities? And the way we look at this, and it's kind of cool, Bothell is kind of in front of a lot of folks on this, people haven't really addressed this, we'd like to be part of the solution, not the problem. So we made it really simple. If there's a potential for someone to subdivide a lot, and it's, and we're saying roof, foundation to rooftop, if you own from the foundation to the roof and you own everything in between, there's a potential now with the legislation that you can split that lot. Well, if that happens, you should have your own water meter, you should be in charge of your own accounts and your sewer and your storm, just because you should. Well, why should you? Well, one, it'd be really tough to buy a property when someone else controls that. So that kind of is a barrier to homeownership. We don't like that. Two, there's no way to show that it's equitable. I'm not sure if you'd like your neighbor paying your bill and telling you how much you use. And three, it, I'm just gonna leave it at three. I have another one, but I just can't think of it. But it just makes things really confusing. So anytime we see the potential for frontage and rooftop ownership, that can be an ADU, that could be something like this with a firewall, with separate plumbing, our standards currently say, if it's a standalone dwelling unit, you must have your own water sewer. It's great. I think everyone can understand that. Well, uh-oh, it costs a lot of money to connect. That's a barrier to affordability. What are you gonna do about that? Because right now, our smallest meter size in your water meter, you typically probably have a 3/4-inch meter. And when you build a new home, you may have a one-inch. When you build a new home, you have to buy into the system, you have to pay a facility charge. Well, that 3/4-inch meter may cost, I actually know the number of it, my brain's blanking, I'm gonna say $8,000. Well, is that proportionate? If you have a 4,000-square-foot home with a 3/4-inch meter, and then you're, does that have the same burden as that duplex? Probably not, right? So what we can do is, we can say, okay, if they could use the same amount of water, they should be paying the same rates, but should they be buying into the system the same as a large home? And the answer is, maybe not. So what we did in 2023 is, we said, hey, let's look at this. And for small dwellings, they should probably pay a little less to buy into the system. And we looked at actual fixture counts, how many faucets or sinks or this or that. And we developed a small dwelling unit facility charge. So if someone comes in and they build a home with, it's a certain number of fixtures, but it's less than half of what a, you know, a large home with three bedrooms, three baths and all that stuff, then they should pay a proportional lower facility charge. And it is, it's about 50% for the water, which is great, and it's about 70% for sewer. And part of that is just because sewer's, sewer sewer, and sewer goes to King County and all this good stuff. So we're trying to promote affordability with that small dwelling unit facility charge and still make sure that developments like that, someone can actually own the home because that's what it's designed for and that's what occurred. Now, if dwelling units on a different floor, and I use this apartment building because it's easy to do, and it's not foundation to rooftop, will they ever have their own meter? The answer is no. If you live in an apartment building or a condo, typically you share a meter, but you have an association, someone that can take that bill and split it up, right? So if we see dwelling units on different floors, not foundation to rooftops. And the other thing is, those meters, I mean, those homes might get 3/4-inch meters, that might get a 2-inch meter. It seems kind of counterintuitive, but the 2-inch meter can provide a lot more flow. And that's an expensive meter. So if you have an apartment building or a condominium association, no problem, you can't subdivide it, they all share plumbing, they should all share a meter in a sewer service, and that's how we look at this. So for single lot utility improvements, we're saying no in-street main work because the burden is low with respect to the impact. They'd still have to address stormwater because stormwater is a regulation that you have to mitigate your stormwater. However, you may require service line installation or replacement of substandard services, and that's to protect the dwelling unit, the community member and also the system. I will say, right now, you can't, if there is not sewer water to your property, there's only certain provisions where you can install a well in the city, you have to extend water main, and you typically can't install septic. So that's kind of a wrinkle here, and we'll work through that. And that's it. And you have an individual meter or a shared meter based on the type of, you know, foundation rooftop, and that also dribbles down to account types and the rest. I think this has been a lot of information, I'm just gonna go to the next slide. This is it. So next steps on this is, we'd like to have some discussion, get some additional feedback, clarification. And I really want to stress that these regulations will probably change over time. We don't know what middle housing is going to bring, right? I mean, are we going to see those four townhomes on every lot in the city? Probably not, right? But we'll see something, so we'll probably revise this as it goes. We're doing our best to be proactive, be part of the solution. So once we get feedback from you, we bring this back to city council with planning commission consideration or input. We've already started revising the section of BMC Title 17, and it's literally changing a handful of words. And then we'll bring that and we'll get more feedback. One thing I didn't, I had it in a slide earlier, but we do have some interim measures to address this with ADUs. We've already discussed that our code that says you might have to do frontage improvements for ADU is not consistent with state regulations, so we have mechanisms in place, though, so that we don't do that now. And then our goal is to get this through as quickly as possible. Like I said, we had an accelerated timeline. Director Greenspan was kind enough to just bring this forward in a meeting like this where there's new planning commissioners, so thank you. But we'd really like to get your feedback and understanding so that we can bring this forward to council and address this issue and make sure we're taking care of this type of use. That is it. So we're not asking for a formal decision, we're asking for input. And then Director Greenspan, after we have this discussion, might talk about next steps on what it means to get this information to council.
All right, commissioners, questions or comments?
Did the state law get into short-term rentals? Like, if the unit's being used for short-term rentals?
I have not seen that.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know the answer. Director Greenspan, I don't think so. Yeah, like VRVOs and things?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know. That's an interesting question.
And then has there been an analysis on, you know, obviously there's an impact, but there's also possibly increased property type revenue? Like I know Bothell only gets so much of that, but has there been an analysis into like, if a lot becomes two to four or above, like what, what that means for the overall revenue for the city?
No, and it's a really good question. I wish I had a better answer for you, but we don't even know how many of these will occur. So even like in a, when you plan for the comp plan, it's, it's, I think it's going to be this. It's a, it's, it's something we should be watching. Because it's, it's, if they are sellable, you know, like foundation to rooftop, there could be some real estate excise tax, right? That's probably pretty much what we're limited to. I will say, since we do a lot of work with utilities and we have to fund for this, part of the reason we're, everyone's comfortable with a small dwelling unit facility charge is if these folks do use a lot of water, they're still paying the same rate, right? You still say that pay the same rate per cubic foot of water. So that will help mitigate those impacts. So, but it, it's good. And I think that's a good thing we should be watching over time is, are we seeing a lot of this occur? And if it is, does it generate revenue that, yeah?
Mr. Lieber?
I have a question about sort of like the input, how is received and the engagement of the community? When the staff made recommendations, how the developers were engaged in terms of receiving feedback and the community? Like if you can explain to me more about the process of decision-making, thank you.
For sure. And then, yeah, thank you. So to, to rewind a bit, there was quite a bit of engagement with the community, a lot of engagement with the community with respect to middle housing and ADUs. It's only been more recently than when this has started to, when these projects have come in. We, we've kind of, I mean, we knew we had to update things, but we didn't think it was, like I said, typically update things at the end of the year. So it's like, oh, we better address this now. So the engagement with the community on this issue is, is pretty much zero. So it was brought up several times at city council, there's public comment, staff listened to that, council listened to that, brought it forward as an agenda item and we're bringing it forward. So next steps for engagement on this would be starting the planning commission, get your feedback, bring it back to council. Anytime we do something like this, it would require an ordinance to update the municipal code and there's a process for that. The minimum is having a public hearing, but there may be more engagement than that. We, we haven't quite set those steps yet, but yeah, we really want to get people's input.
So when we get to that ordinance part there where it says public hearing, excuse me, there would be a hearing before the planning commission where we would solicit public comment and then the commission would make a recommendation to the city council. They'd have a second hearing at the council level where they would also solicit input. So this is a fairly early stage now, but there will be more steps along the way.
Yeah, and that's one thing we might discuss at the end of this and maybe, so, once again, this is an accelerated process. So it may be that the recommendation isn't with a public hearing with the planning commission. I mean, that's how it typically goes and it goes straight to council for a public hearing. But that's something that will have to be addressed. Because once again, we want to get these in place so that we can promote this type of growth and, yeah.
Commissioner Robson?
Thank you. So I have a couple of questions. The first being, so what are you specifically looking for us, from us today? I see that you have some frontage, some staff recommendations. Do you want us to make specific comments on that? Like give you the thumbs up on each one of these? Or do you just want us to be informed on this? What, what would you like from us on this?
So what I would like is to have enough discussion. And if we could get to the point where we check these real quick, it'd make things much more, expedite the process.
Sure.
So if you're willing to, if there's more general questions, otherwise, I mean, I tried to make these tables so they're super simple. We're just kind of, it wasn't my intention because you could just come back and say, okay. Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
So would you like to do that or are there more general questions?
Well, I actually have a few more general questions. I was just to, for starters, that's what you're looking for. Okay, great, thank you. One thing I was wondering about is when we were talking about foundation to roof potential for ownership there that attaching into the water system was reduced facility charge. Can you explain to me again why that is just because the house is smaller? You said their, their use is less than half, but just because a house is smaller doesn't mean it doesn't have eight kids in there, right? And so, yeah, could you speak to that?
For sure. And once again, we were trying to be part of the solution when we brought this forward because we understood we'd have similar questions like this. So when we look at sewer and water, we look at peak flows and pressures. Okay, so a home that has, I'm just gonna say the number, thirty-nine water connection fixture units. Those can all be turned on at the same time, all this stuff. It takes flow and pressure and that's, it's not the volume of water, it's those peak demands that we're concerned about. Now, the kicker is, is most of these mains are oversized for fire flow, so it's not a real issue, but it's still a good way for us to look at this. So what I'd say is, and I think for, water was seven, water was four, okay, water was, I think seventeen fixture count. So what we did is we said, okay, let's take a typical ADU. It has a bathroom with a toilet, shower, sink. It has a kitchen with this, this, this and one hose bib. You do an ADU like that?
And laundry.
Yeah, oh, yeah, and laundry, yeah, I'm sorry. No, it's, it's all in there, it's, it's, it's all in there. No, we, we, we checked it real quick, thank you. Okay, well, that's, that's what we'd expect to see in an ADU. Now, if it's an ADU with three bathrooms, maybe that's not the case. So we wouldn't want to say we want a, a, a small dwelling facility charge just because it's an ADU, because these things get large. So we said it's that. And we did the, and thanks for catching that, Carrie. We did the same thing with sewer. We said, okay, they have different calculations and that's, that's why the number is slightly different. Because it's just the way it is. I mean, kitchens have a big impact on sewer, right? And that's exactly what we did. So it, it really promotes, someone comes in a cottage or ADU, they can, they can mitigate their impact by buying into the system and connecting. We can demonstrate clearly that the potential for them to use peak flows is less. But someone could run their faucet all day. Well, they're still paying the same charge. You live in a three thousand square foot home and you use, the average is about sixty gallons per day per person. Let's say a hundred and sixty gallons per, per home, you use that, your average. Okay, someone comes in in an ADU and they choose to use three hundred and twenty. They'll, they'll pay their impact for the rates, but they won't be burdened because those pressures and flows won't be as high. And we think it's really cool because it's really simple.
Other comments?
Sure. So first of all, yeah, I really applaud the, your department for the proportional, I think of it as the schedule values, whatever. You know, the fees, you know, for smaller ADUs that you guys implemented last year. I've even told people about that because I thought it was pretty clever and very fair. And like you said, on the forefront of like what utilities are doing, what cities are doing. So that was great. And then I, I think overall, this is great. We want to see, you know, this gentle density and this is a nice solution. People like Mac back here can get, add, add some, add some dwellings to, to the city with, with the, the fun, the small amount of funds that they can dedicate to it and we can get more people living here. And so really, yeah, it's like literally walking the talk that we, we well wanted when we, when we also brought the middle housing ordinance along. So that's great. So I, I have no complaints about any of this. Zooming out to like the, like thirty thousand foot level, future questions, I hope planning and council and, and the city will tackle or thinking about. Two years ago, we got the urban three study, which I think is still really germane and I hope we keep digging it out and looking at it. And they, they showed something that's so important for, you know, every city to understand that our most productive buildings are, you know, the big ones, the dense ones, the commercial, the multifamily, the townhouses, et cetera. The ring is the most taxed, they're usually closer to things. They're, they're net givers versus net takers. And we, we all understand now that the single family house takes more, it's, it's in the red generally. So it's great when they add an ADU or, or split it up or something like that. But essentially, we, we, we penalize people who are creating solutions for the city at the highest rate and they're paying more, you know, freight, as it were, to pay for all the city services and fire trucks and parks and stuff like that. But we have to have our utilities, we have to have our frontages and stuff like that. So I'm not saying I have, I'm not coming to you with a solution as much as I, I hope we'll start to dig into that a little bit and understand, we keep giving deference and preference to single family. And in this case, it's great because people are billing ADUs and stuff like that. And we probably don't need sidewalks on, on slow, slow secondary streets and stuff like that. But I just want us to keep that in mind, that we're often penalizing what we need most. And again, I don't have any awesome solution right now, but I just want us to be thinking about that in, in the next maybe a few years because it's become such an acute issue. So that, that's just something that comes to mind a lot, that is doing this work as well. One question I had, because I've gone through this, of course, dedications and eminent domain and so forth. If you have, for example, like our project, I stopped at there, we have the dedications. If someone is doing that and they're on a BRT line or something like we are, they're gonna have to give up that three feet or four feet or whatever. Is that, is that dedication gonna happen regardless of whether they do anything to their lot or during an ADU? Or are they gonna be compensated like an eminent domain case? Are, are we looking at that or is that really kind of figured out case law?
So I'll get, take a shot at this, but the devil's in the details. So we can require, the city can require dedication as part of subdivision.
Mm-hmm, yeah. But if they're not subdividing?
Maybe not. And I think that's why I, I put that in there because what we do want to do is we want to make sure that if we know something's coming in, you don't want someone to build their home in this area. And it can, but it doesn't make sense, right? We want to make sure that driveway accesses work. So what we do now is, I'm not saying it's exactly similar, but it's close is, okay, well, maybe we, the city isn't going to get the dedication because you're not subdividing. Well, we're gonna be smart and make sure that.
But you might need it for the BRT or something, right?
Yeah. And make sure that all works. So right now, the only mechanism the city has for that type of dedication is through a project, like a capital project where you go through a right-of-way agents and do that or a subdivision. Personally, and this is not figured out yet, but I really hope when we see more of this middle housing, that when they subdivide, they're, they're subject to the city's subdivision regulations. And there's, there's a provision called Offspring's Single, I don't even want to use the words. But basically, if you meet all the exterior setbacks and you check boxes, you can subdivide. Now, that would be a good time to be get, to get the right-of-way, in my opinion. So that when the city came through, one, we didn't have to have someone move their home, which doesn't happen. And two, it's, it's smart planning. And, and really, these, no matter how you slice it, you're doing an ADU, you are increasing impacts. It's small, but do you want to allow that so it makes it so something can occur in the future? And I, and it, it's for the property or, you know, the community members benefit as much as the city to make sure these things are in the right spot. So it's not ironed out yet, Mr. Westerberg, but I, I think that's how it's probably gonna fall out.
Yeah, I know it, and even my question is a bit muddled because I, I almost don't know how to ask it. Because it's so cut and dried for when you're, when you're plotting or when you're doing a, a commercial project or something. It's very, you know, obvious how, what you do, you're following state and city law. But yeah, when someone's on something where you have to have that, simply have to have it for improvements. Again, like BRT is the example, like you're bringing up, like one eighty-fifth, that I imagine it gets a little, little tricky there.
Yeah, and this really is a lot different. That's why codes will likely change adapt over time. But we think we have a pretty good path forward with existing code for the rest. We just haven't seen it happen yet.
Yeah, 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 and it may not, you know, you may not ever have one of those. I'll give other people time because I think we've hit the things I was curious about. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? I'd just say it's kind of a general observation. You know, we've spent a lot of time in the last, I don't know how far back to go, but encouraging middle housing in the interest of increasing affordability. And it's good to see that we're looking to bring other regulations in alignment. So the goal of affordability is an undercut by older regulations in place. So I congratulate staff for moving in that direction. And I also like the idea of maybe it's just an asphalt path because walkability is, is important. And even in some of these non arterial streets, getting people a pathway is a good thing. And if we can do that affordably without having to meet all the bells and whistles, I applaud that. So thank you.
Outstanding, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, do you wanna?
Yeah, and once, this is a lot of time. I just have to say thank you right now. And if, if you're willing to go through this so we can kind of get a gut check on these, like I said, this was actually one of the more challenging memos to write because at first I had a little text, it's like, God, this is too much. But if we make tables, is it okay to do that?
Yeah, let's go. It's.
Jason, okay.
You're, you're our agenda item tonight, so.
Well, once again, I really value your time and, and I often provide too much information. But like I said, this is a really important issue and I, I think we can't gloss over this. So, okay, if you could turn to page three. There's a table. And the situation is.
Yeah.
Oh, no, I'm so sorry.
The packet numbers are different.
Oh dang it. How about the first, the second table? Not the one that compares cities and the next one, single lot development frontage requirements.
That's page eight, the packet.
Okay, page eight, I can, I can do that conversion, I can do math. So, situation, the intended use is consistent, how it was initially developed. And I, and what we're saying is, well, once again, this is the example we gave. It's, yeah, it may not have curb gutter sidewalk, landscape strip, but it was designed for one dwelling unit, it's inconsistent. Should furniture recruitment required? We're saying no. And because the impact is not greater than what it's, it's, it was originally designed. Now, someone may come back and say, well, where's my sidewalk? And the answer is, well, this is how it was developed. And if it redevelops at some time and it's more impact, maybe that's when you go to sidewalk. Because we get complaints, we, even on, I didn't know you were there, sir. Even Mr. Carter Street, it's like, hey, where's our sidewalks? Where's our storm? The answer is, it's not there, it wasn't developed like that. The city's not going to come in and do these things because funds have to be focused on system-wide growth improvements like arterials. So we're saying that if you don't increase the impact like that, then you probably shouldn't install frontage. Any concerns?
So comments, questions? Head dons, that this looks good? Commissioner Robson?
My only question is, is this gonna be encourage people to just continue building single-family homes when otherwise we could be looking at more, to reduce costs? When we could be looking at more development on a single lot? Maybe, you know, the benefits of having a, you know, the benefits in having a profit regarding a duplex or quad outweighs what, you know, say your savings on frontage. But that would be my only concern, would be that people would just be like, oh, well, it's too expensive to do frontage, which sounds surprisingly expensive. And it, so we'll just put in a single-family home. Is, is there a chance? Are, are we kicking ourselves in the teeth here by, what do you think?
So I'm just gonna give you, and this is your discussion, but I will say if, if we're looking at affordability, maybe that should be a factor. If, if someone has to have the capital of a developer and, and demolish a home and buy the property and put it for homes and mitigate their impacts, maybe it's not the right time. If, if someone can afford that, you just want to put an ADU, right? Not everyone, and, and the way we look at this is it's, it's all over a long period. At some point, I mean, you guys live here, I mean, none of this stuff was here, right? Things change over time and it's usually market-driven. So what I'd say is, I, I hear what you're saying. I don't think it's going to encourage single dwelling units or ADUs. What it will do is if, if that's what people can afford, it'll allow them to do those type of developments and you'll get more housing and it'll be more affordable because there are less requirements. Does that, no? It, it's really, this question is, if, if someone's doing something consistent with how it's developed, should frontage improvements be required? Which we're saying, we don't think so. If someone's doing something where they increase impact considerably, like one home to four, should frontage improvements be required? And then we're saying some level of frontage improvement should be required.
Yeah, okay, yeah, you're right.
And, and all of that is in the context of ADUs are excluded from increasing the impact.
Yes. Yeah, so I mean, the best thing for affordable housing, and I'm just kind of speaking off the, maybe every home gets an ADU. And then when we knew our housing and it, it makes sense, then every home gets a duplex and every home gets a fourplex. But we're looking at the long-term vision. And, and I'm not, I'm just trying to explain stuff, I'm not trying to be right. I, I thought about this a lot, so I hope you take it that way. Okay, okay. So I'm gonna say there's general consensus that if you're not exceeding, not generating a lot more impacts, then probably no frontage. And if you are generating impacts, there should maybe be some frontage considerations.
Yeah, I think that's the sense of the commission.
Okay, and I didn't mean to speak for you, but.
Looking around the table, I think.
Okay, the next table. Now we talk about thresholds. So first, if you do something that increases the impact a lot, maybe do frontage. Now, what is the threshold for that to occur? And what we're proposing, the first one is, should frontage improvements be based on value or gross floor area? We actually think gross floor area is a great way to go because, case example, sitting behind me, the existing home, and this is one of the reasons why we like having these type of questions in the community, the existing home may, the value of the existing home, it's a, it's a nice home, but it's older, it may be low. So if someone has a, a three thousand square foot home that's valued, that's brand new and it's valued at five hundred thousand, if you base that fifty percent threshold, no, now I can go build a two hundred and fifty thousand ADU on my property, not trigger improvements, right? Is the value. Now, if someone has a older home that for some reason the county thinks is worth less, let's say sixty thousand dollars, that means same use, well, now I can only build a ADU worth thirty thousand. Otherwise, I've got to do all that stuff. Well, now I can only build a ADU worth thirty thousand. Otherwise, I've gotta do all that stuff. It's like backwards. It, it worked in the past with the type of development we see, but for these new uses, it's almost like, uh-uh. So we're saying it shouldn't be value, because it, it disproportionately impacts older homes, it discourages development. We think it should be based on gross floor area. And that's really easy to measure. And you look at King County Assessor, and it's nine hundred seventy square feet, and then, okay, I'm gonna go to eighteen hundred, and we're not talking ADUs or conversion. Um, okay, that's, that's simple. You doubled the impact. And so we think it's pretty equitable, and it's really simple.
All right, comments?
Yeah.
Commissioner Westerberg?
Uh, I just wanna concur, because I've also been through commercial projects where we had to get the, uh, the study for what the current value would be. And then you couldn't exceed that for improvements. Of course, you had to, to bring a project into conformance, which would have been like demolishing the whole building, and they wanted to like keep a historic building. So I, there are, and that's not even residential. Um, you know, you can argue all day long with, with probably, um, the assessor about what something's valued at. So I think that it's just a can of worms. So I completely think that something, you could just do the math problem. It is X big, and therefore you get X more, is really the way to go. So I'm happy about that. Just wanted to comment.
Other commissioners? Yeah, I'd agree. Simplicity has great value in and of itself. The other thing I'd say is complexity adds cost. And again, we're trying to mitigate costs, so, yeah, go simple when possible, so.
And I'd like to add to that real quick. And part of this is, these developments won't be seasoned developers by and large, right? So our goal, working with CD and everyone, is to make this, like you said, as simple as possible. People should know their expectations. When someone comes in, I, sorry, keep pointing, Mr. Carter, and things are nebulous, and it's like, hey, what the heck over? Um, that's not our goal. Our goal is to make things as simple as possible, but we have to still follow our regulations and code. And that's why this is such a good discussion, and we're glad to get questions like this. So, uh, the next one is, oh, proportionally, if below threshold, then frontage costs limited to twenty-five percent development improvement. So once again, we, we really think that there is some, there is a burden. Um, and. So, so this is good. So we have that threshold, that twenty-five percent, and what we're saying is, yeah, retain it, but if you're below the threshold, you're just below the threshold. You're not gonna be below the threshold, and the city comes and say, okay, now install twenty-five percent improvements. If you're below the threshold, you do nothing. So staff recommends retaining the twenty-five percent limit to promote affordability. Revised BMC clearly state that no frontage improvements are required if below the threshold. So it's, and right now, it's, it's not clear. I mean, if you're below the threshold, you have to do twenty-five percent. What we're saying now is, below the threshold, you just don't do it. And if you're above the threshold, then the twenty-five percent kicks in to promote affordability.
Comments? Head nodding, I think, I think you've got a consensus.
I'll just add that I actually think that'll, that'll make a difference. Like, you know, watching cities the last ten or fifteen years do, uh, add ADU, um, kind of loosen up ADU regulations in LA and other places, as soon as they start to, you know, remove a parking requirement or seeing things like this, suddenly the graph of numbers of units built starts going up, up. I'm sure it's not lost on, if you, sure you've seen some of that. And so, um, again, I'll use Matt, cuz he's here, but someone like him, like, oh, we, we removed some of these little things that were really big stumbling blocks, and now I can just, I can build my unit, I can kinda, I've got X amount set aside that I didn't have, you know, another twenty-five percent for all this other stuff. So anyway, just another kudos. I think that's gonna actually make a difference. At the time that we need this done.
One more table. All right. This is the utilities, and to me, this is the simplest. And I'll, I'll tell you right now, and maybe someone in this group will comment on it, but I'm telling you right now, if you do a, if it's designed for one home, and you do a four-lot subdivision, you are adding impact to the utility system. And we typically, we would require you update the mains and the rest, because otherwise, the ratepayers are on the hook. Now, that's, not everyone agrees with that, but that's how we've done things. And it works well with large projects. In this case, these are small projects, they're residential, single lot. It's extremely expensive for someone to just do this for one lot. It's not proportionally impact. You're not adding a lot of burden. So we basically come out, and this is against everything I've been trained for and everything I've done for, like, last whatever couple decades, but it's like, look, we're trying to promote affordability. If, if they're, it's a, it's a lot, and it's got a substandard main, just, it's a substandard main. You're not subdividing, you're not doing all these things. So make sure your services are good, uh, make sure you've got the right water service, and it's not old galvanizer or something, it's all gummed up. Make sure you have the right sewer service, where some people will come back and say, hey, my sewer service is fine, it's already, you know, it's already taking care of my home. But the bottom line is, the environmental impacts from that with infiltration and inflow, and then roots that impact the rest, it's just too high. So we're saying, don't do any main improvements, done. Now, if someone plans to do this type of development, and there are no water mains, you're not allowed to drill a well. So that's gonna be a, a barrier to affordability. Because you'll have to extend a main or wait, and it's the same with sewer. There are sewer requirements. You can't put septic on a lot of lots in the city of Bothell. So we're saying, repair replacement of substandard utility mains along the frontage, we're saying, remove that requirement.
Comments? Commissioner Robson?
Thank you. I'm, I'm sorry, I don't understand. Are we still talking about single lots? Or are we talking about, um, larger?
Only single lots.
This is only on single lots. They will require no utility upgrades if you're only, okay, okay, thank you. That's all.
And I really wanna make that clear, because I'd hate to see a big subdivision come in and accrete a little, and they don't mitigate their impact. So this is only single lots, and I can make that stronger.
And I think it's just the flipping between pages that threw me off. Um, okay, so even if it's a quad or something like that, you still don't really need to do any kinda, huh, yeah, okay.
I'm just gonna be blunt, from a utility perspective, this is, this is hard, because we want the improvements. But it's also, it needs to be proportionally impact.
Right.
And if you take a lot, and it's a lot, and you do this, you, you're really not adding that much impact. So I think it can be justified in this way.
And were you to require such improvements on a, on a main, it wouldn't be the main front of the house, you, you gotta go upstream and downstream, and suddenly you're very, very expensive.
Yeah. And we do things where we allow like sewer repair and rehabilitation, which is like a tenth of the cost of replacing. But water is water. So we, we think this is, this, um, the impacts are relatively low. Uh, we think that, I mean, they'll be paying their facility charge, which, which, which will help projects and, and, uh, yeah.
Commissioner Westerberg?
This is just gonna be kinda redundant. It's really what you just said and what this, what this gets at, but, um, I just had a note, um, that I always wonder, there's this misconception that developers are, you know, like stacking money and getting rich if they have to, um, they have to pay those, those impact fees and stuff like that. They're pocketing them. And, um, it's just passed on to the renter and the future buyer. And so it exacerbates our housing cost problems. So, that's good, we're keeping that in mind. Like, you, you keep mentioning affordability, which I appreciate, because that's really what it comes down to. It's gonna add fifty thousand, a hundred thousand, whatever it may be, to the cost of that, that home. And, um, so, as long as we're not destroying the system, it's great that we're finding a way through the, the thicket. Because, uh, we're just seeing a lot of those costs passed on. And I end up doing the math and seeing how much that is, and so, good. Anyway, it's great to keep that in mind. And, um, I know council's gonna probably keep thinking about that as well. Thanks.
And, and it's just a little bit of a diversion from the topic here, but, you know, as we, we look at these newer developments, they tend to use less water. You know, the new toilets use less than the old ones did. New washing machine is more efficient than an old washing machine. So you do mitigate the improvements there alone.
Well-planned development is usually a benefit. Like you said, it's the economies of scale, it's, it's whatever you said about, I wrote it down. Yeah, givers. Uh, but it's also, you think about it, older development, they don't have the same stormwater requirements, right? And, and so the new developments are, are better at that. And they, like you said, I mean, the materials and, and backflow for the water system or, or, you know, making sure you have good adequate pressure, um, yeah. And we see our usage decrease with the, even we have more units, I mean, our, our water usage isn't increasing a lot. That's because the per capita usage is a lot less, which is awesome. So yeah, that's a really good point. Any questions about consensus on the first one? Chair?
I think we had consensus, and we're all on board.
I think there was a question on Zoom.
Oh.
Oh, yes, Commissioner Jones. I'm sorry, the, the lighting washes it out a little bit, so, uh, I'm having a little trouble seeing, but please go ahead.
Absolutely, okay, Commissioner Jones. Um, so, I'm not disagreeing with any of my fellow commissioners and affordability is of course on top of all our lines, but I do have a question. So, um, and I'm also, I, I think what I'm hearing is, you know, the typical developer of a single lot, even if it's a single lot converted into a four-unit, is, this is not a big time to bother. This is, this is typically some, um, blah, blah, or, as, they had the lot for a while, they decided they wanted to subdivide it, that's fine. Um, but it's still one home probably now turning into four homes with four families, because the whole point of affordability is to get four families on that one. Agree that the impact from those four homes compared to the one is probably not that great. My question is, have the city done any, and now, let's assume middle housing is extremely successful, which is what we want it to be. You're in a area only number of single-family lots, and, uh, to, you know, this one gets subdivided into four. Well, then someone else subdivides into four, well, then someone else subdivides. And so now you have a street of more than ten single-family homes that are now forty homes. Any modeling in terms of the impact of water and sewer system, I feel sewer system in particular, from something like that, I mean. So in other words, yes, one lot subdivided into four, not much impact. The whole street, not the same developer, multiple developers, because they're all in this, they're separate single-family lots. Um, what, what would be the impact then on this lot?
This is a.
Well, that's probably about name, you know.
Yeah, yeah, no, this is a. This is a very good question, and, and I should have had something in with presentation, I'll add it. So the question is, is city, is the city looking at water and sewer capacity availability with respect to this type of development? And the answer is yes. So this type of development is envisioned in the comprehensive plan update. Um, we're rerunning our sewer and water models. Once again, we don't know exactly how this is going. We're not looking at street by street. We don't know exactly how this is going to work out, but we're, we're doing that work. And what I can tell you is, even without doing that work, like I mentioned before, water mains are typically sized for fire flow. I have no concern, uh, of an eight-inch main out there, and you're adding these four units. It's, it, that's not the concern. The concern that, that we see at the utility is, okay, someday those mains have to be replaced, and who's going to pay for it? The people that impact it, or the, or the ratepayers. We wanna make it fair. And we think this is pretty equitable. So yes, we are evaluating those impacts. We rerun the water model. To me, that's a pressure system, that's really important. Sewer does pretty okay usually. Um, and we're, but we're looking at that less as a model, more of, hey, you know, more, uh, qualitatively. Um, and the kicker on this, though, is, and I'm, I'm glad this slide is still up, we'll be looking at this over time. We don't, this, we could get hundreds of applications in the next year, or we could get three. So we update those models periodically. Um, it's typically less than every seven years, uh, when we do our big updates. But we'll, we'll be watching this, because we have to be, make sure that we can provide water and sewer to the community. Uh, so does that answer your question?
Absolutely, I think that, and I said, hopefully this is wildly successful, and then we'll just, uh, we'll just upgrade the mains, uh, of the city. So it'll be great.
Outstanding.
I'd also add that we will be coming to Planning Commission next month on the fifth, and later in the month, on the draft comprehensive plan, where we can have a little bit more of a discussion about future land use alternatives, and discuss a little bit more of the assumptions that are made in our comprehensive plan about compliance with HB eleven-ten over the next twenty years. So more on that exact topic to come. Commissioner Sills?
I'm just wondering, is there a case study of another city that's had rapid growth or this kind of development and what they did?
I don't know the answer. I, I will say we even looked at our transportation impact fee. We did that last year, and, and we had to go to Oregon and California to, to look at comparables. This is relatively newer for this area, so I, I can't really answer that.
Okay.
Um, we'll continue to, to look for things like that. Like I said, even the facility charge thing, that, City of Bothell kinda made that up, um, based on real things, on real numbers. But it was, it was a concept that I think is pretty progressive. Um, so we'll be watching for that, and, and, but I, I don't know.
Even during our middle housing discussion, it, it was hard to find examples which have been in place for a long period. You know, we looked at adjacent communities, and you're just going back a couple of years, and the number of units are relatively small, it's a handful. The hope is that it'll start ramping up, but there's, there isn't a lot of data that we've seen. All right, next item? Do, I think you're getting what you need, right?
Yes, please, thank you. Um, I'm just gonna say the service lines, it's just, it's kind of a has-to, but we'd like to see if you folks have any problems with that. Any, any questions or concerns about that? Okay.
I, I, yeah, I agree it's a has-to. I would suspect you're gonna get a fair amount of benefit replacing old water and sewer lines from leakage and inflow. So that alone, I suspect, will offset some of the impact.
Most definitely, and we, we, thanks for reading that up, because, and once again, sorry, Mr. Carter, you're there, but, I mean, there are other options as, as opposed to open trenching. I mean, there's cure and place pipe, the city's using that now for mains, and it, it's, it's much less expensive, it's less intrusive, and it's, it's a good way to go. And it's, it's not a bad thing. There are discussions just in the last few years, should there be video inspections of, I'm not making this up, of, of sewer service lines at point of sale, and should they be mitigated? I mean, it was a real thing. It didn't, I don't know if you remember that, Karen, but it, it didn't gain traction. But it's, this is a real issue, because that excess water that gets into these lines gets into the treatment system, and that's what helps provide excess flow that could be combined sewer overflows, there's concerns about nutrient loading and future sound, all these things. So the better, and actually, the city's looking, working on INI, uh, infiltration inflow system, uh, valuation right now. The more of that we can keep out of the system, and it's just sewage, it's better for everyone. It's better for the ratepayers, it's better for environment, so, okay.
I can comment to that, though. Map, it's creeping into residential, but, um, most people I know, when they're buying a, um, a, a non-residential, a property, as part of their due diligence, they, they run a scope, because it can be a huge bargaining chip if they have to, if they know they're gonna have to reland it or something, yeah.
Okay, separate sewer and water service required for each individual dwelling unit. Um, we require, we recommend requiring separate sewers, water, if we have foundation, potential for subdivision. Dwelling units that extend from foundation to rooftop, that allows for future sale, which is part of this whole initiative, homeownership. And it also ensures that, that you're in control of your own meter, and it's equitable. Um, we have situations, I'm trying to think of what, oh, we have a manufactured home community where they have a hundred fifty-seven units, and they're all off one meter. Someone has a leak, right? Everyone pays for it. So we think it's more equitable, and we put in place these small dwelling unit facility charges to help reduce that burden.
Comments? Just seeing nodding heads, so consider that an agreement.
Okay. Next one is kind of the opposite. Should they be required if they can't be separated? And we'd say no. Um, because like I said, apartment buildings, condominiums, where you share stuff, you, if, if you have a hundred units, it's not a hundred three-quarter inch meters, it's one two or, or one three-inch meter. They even have a different billing category. So we think, okay, doesn't make sense. If there's no potential for ownership, and that applies to ADUs, right? ADUs have, if they're foundation rooftop, they're separate, they have potential for individual ownership. If they don't have that, so attached ADUs wouldn't have it. Um, dwellings, foundation rooftop, and other things like that. So we think that, no, we, we should make sure the standards reflect that if, if it's not found. standards reflect that if, if it's not foundation to rooftop, you don't have to have your own service.
Okay, looking around the table, nodding heads, so, yes.
The last one is undergrounding overhead lines, and that's something that's in our code and our standards. Staff is looking with City Engineer Marakawa about how we can update that. Because in the past, when someone would come and do development, and they, they have 300 foot of frontage, and they're doing curb gutter sidewalk, the underground, the overhead lines on the frontage, and everything's underground internally, it's always undergrounded internally. What we're finding now is these two or three lot subdivisions, that cost has just gone through the roof. And it's taking more time and the rest. And it doesn't always make sense on these smaller things, because typically, you underground a portion, and you may have to add poles. That's not really what we're looking for. For at least single lot redevelopment, we're recommending removing the requirement to underground overhead utilities on the frontage. You'd still have to underground your dwelling, which is what you do now. You don't, you don't hang wires, you don't make things worse.
All right. Questions, comments? Looking around the table.
Yeah, I agree. The idea of having overhead wire, and then one lot underground, and then overhead again, just no benefit. So.
Well, that's what I have on the table. I've looked over at City Engineer Marakawa and Director Greenspan a couple times to see if they're waving their arms, or had questions or comments to add. Anything to add?
I, I can speak to what the process would be moving forward after, Commissioner, if you'd like to discuss first, or I can tell you now what that step would be. I think it might answer some of the questions on engagement. So my understanding of our code is that Boyd has gotten direction from City Council to come to Planning Commission with amendments to Title 17. And our code requires that referral and recommendation from the Planning Commission. So, Boyd, it sounds like you've gotten some pretty clear direction this evening, based on what we've presented. That would equip Boyd to prepare the code. And at that stage, we could come back to the Planning Commission and prepare what we've done in the past, which I think is a series of findings, conclusions, and recommendations, and have the Planning Commission take action on that. Now, the City Council did not direct Planning Commission to conduct a public hearing. That technically is not required. We can confirm whether the City Council would like the Planning Commission to conduct a public hearing. But that, again, is not required in this process. That will happen at City Council. So with that, we would be able to move forward. And, Boyd, I don't want to commit you to a specific timeframe, but it sounds like you've got some pretty clear direction. Would you be able to have draft code ready for coming back to the Planning Commission in June?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So that, that could be the next step. We would have a findings, conclusions, and recommendations document for the Planning Commission, potentially to take action on it at that time. And that would keep this moving forward to City Council.
Yes, Commissioner Lever?
I just have a, a comment around the, like, the data. Like, as we're looking at, really looking at this over time, it will be, I would like to see more of the permits that are in the pipeline, or just kind of really get a sense of the current state, so we have that baseline. So that when we come back to see whether or not the policy revisions are really, like, taking us in the direction that we're heading, that we don't try to scramble to go back of, like, okay, where we are, and then, who, you know, which developers actually came to the table more because of the changes. And I think that would be super helpful. And also, when it comes to the engagement, because this is part of a process, I will, I would also like to see who has not really participated, that we would like to hear from. Just knowing how engagement is always super difficult. And then just kind of let be part of the, maybe findings as well, or the conclusions, in terms of always thinking of mitigating the impact, since there's always gonna be that, the ones that are gonna be negatively impacted. And I'd like to be able to be ahead of, of that, so that we can understand what to expect. Thank you.
Sure. And a, a quick response. I mean, yeah, so we have some of that information. And at, at some point, maybe Director Greenspan, when you're, when you're a little more staffed up, that might be a good briefing. Because I, I don't, not everyone has a full understanding of, of all the neat development within the City of Bothell. You can, you can go to the map and see all this stuff. When you start seeing all these neat things, and, and how they break out, one's 100, but a lot of them are three or four. And one's this. It, it really could kind of give you a, a understanding of development within the city. Once again, it's all speculative, because it's all different processes. But it might be something for a future update. I, to actually be able to track middle housing that way might be kind of tough, but doesn't mean it can't happen. And that might be a neat thing to do, because we have to monitor this, right?
Yes, we do have to monitor. And we've already been speaking with our permit services staff to create certain building types where we can code middle housing as it comes in. Right now, it's either multifamily or detached single family. Those spaces in between, that's where we need to fill in and be able to track more robustly. To your question about community engagement, and Boyd made reference to this before, there was significant community engagement in 2022 and 23 on middle housing broadly. And I'm happy to go back to that engagement and the comments we received to see to what degree this issue did come up. It may not have. That doesn't mean it's not important to the community. But we can at least daylight whether this was an issue that came up.
All right, thank you. Other comments? Going to Director Greenspan's discussion of the process, my inclination would be, we don't need an extra hearing, we don't need an extra step. And I'd look through the other commissioners. If we have findings, conclusions, and recommendations, that typically does, staff for the new members, would, staff would lay out the findings in the process, conclusions we've drawn, and recommendations out of the committee. And then we discuss that and amend it or agree to it as it is. We'd also solicit comments if anyone in the audience wants to comment. So I think we'd get enough process without adding the time associated with a hearing. And got nodding heads, so.
Quick note, I think this will be more popular than a lot of things we get into. So, because a lot of people have been asking for it, and it really just makes a lot of things easier that people are asking for. So that's just my, my pure opinion on that. But, so I, I don't imagine as much pushback, just from my experience. But we'll see, right?
Other comments? Well, I, I'd like to commend the staff in the city for moving in this direction. It is responsive to the, the general theme we've talked about repeatedly, about affordability. And people talk so much about government hoops and regulations and impacts. And here you are looking to reduce those impacts. So I think this is good, and as Carrie indicated, likely to generate more support than concern. So thank you. Thank you for bringing this to us.
All right. I just want to say thank you for the time. And this is a lot of information, a lot of time, but I really appreciate this, because this, this is how things work. So thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, that concludes our, our new business. Next agenda item is reports from staff. Do we have?
Not necessarily a report, but I wanted to emphasize that we do have some busy meetings coming up over the next couple of months. Our next meeting, I think we have on the agenda, the bylaws, and how we may be revisiting and refining those bylaws. And in June, we have our comprehensive plan coming to the Planning Commission on the 5th. We'll be providing a high-level summary of the draft, and some of the feedback that we received through the current comment process, which is ongoing and live through the 17th of this month. And I also just wanted to note on, for scheduling purposes, I had indicated that there would be a meeting on the 19th of June. That is actually Juneteenth, federal holiday, did not realize that. So we'll probably push that to the 26th, if you wouldn't mind just noting that for your calendars, and letting us know if there's any issues with that for attendance. Because that was where we would have a public hearing on the, on the draft comprehensive plan. Yes? I do have news on new planning staff. Today, we had three new staff begin, including our new deputy director, Christian Geitz is our new deputy. He comes from Issaquah and from Kirkland. Two other planning staff as well. And I'm hoping to have them come either at the next meeting or the first meeting in June to introduce themselves, and get to meet them. Oh, yes. The, we do have a open house event, two open house events scheduled for the next couple of days. Tomorrow at U Dub Bothell, between, I think, 6:00 and 8:00 p.m., there will be an open house on the comp plan. You'll get a chance, if you're able to attend, to see the different element summaries. We have some boards, we have ice cream, apparently, to entice people to come. Please spread the word. And then on Saturday, at Crystal Springs Elementary, we're having another open house, similar to the one we're having tomorrow. And we're hoping to get a lot of community feedback. We also have engagebothell.com as our platform for people to make comments. And people can also comment via email. So we're hoping to get as much public participation as possible.
Great, thank you. Next item we have is reports from members. Any comments from members of the group? I, I would just comment that I just spent a couple weeks traveling. And when, when you go places, the most interesting cities and towns are the ones with active street life. They're the places you want to visit. So, you know, part of what we're looking at here is walkability, making the community more inviting. So that's a goal, to make us be a place people want to come to. So. Any items to report to council? I think not coming out of this. So there being no further business, is there a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn?
There is a motion to adjourn from Commissioner Sills. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Lever has second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. So with that, the meeting is adjourned at 7:43 p.m. Our next meeting will be May 15th, and we'll see you then. Thank you all.